I can call a meeting to order if you would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So are you going to read?
If, yes. If everybody could take a minute and silence their cell phones, we would appreciate that.
Alright, oh, here we go. This is Carter.
Last year, we brought some GLP students and a teacher who came and shared a little bit about the iPads that they were highly named, or trying out in our building. So this year, we've been fortunate enough that all of our classrooms came through too, had the one-to-one initiative, so all of our students had an iPad. So this year, we're presenting from the teacher's perspective. So I do have two teachers here, a kindergarten teacher and first grade teacher, who are going to share a little bit from the teacher's perspective and a very instructional perspective for you, how there is, one way they're implementing the iPads and the impact it's having in their classrooms. So some of the things they're going to share with you is truly how having the iPads has not only multiplied them as a teacher. And it really is one of the best things I've heard teachers say was the fact that now it's almost like having 10 of them in a classroom. Because as they're working with a group of children, they're able to push lessons out to students in a very individualized and differentiated way through the iPads using the correct apps or different applications that they have. They're also finding a variety of ways to differentiate, individualize. They're able to push out different levels of activities for students, and it's all through the iPad, so they're saving an extreme amount of money and budget because they're not making all of these copies. And one of the things they're doing this with is through a program called ClassKit. So that's one of the things they're going to share with you today. So you do all have an iPad in front of you. The teachers are going to present an example of how they use this with their students. I think you're going to see it at a differentiated level, so you won't all see the same thing, but their students don't all see the same thing. So the objective they're reaching in the end might be exactly the same, but how they get there is very different. So I'm really excited to bring two of my very technologically savvy teachers here today who share often with their grade levels and throughout the whole building. I can tell you that the program or application that they're going to show you on the iPads is being used right now in with all of our classrooms, but probably in different levels depending on how familiar the teachers are, how good they're getting at it. We currently have the free app, and we're hoping to get the paid application because it does have more, I guess what we call bells and whistles, in the future. But this is going to be really the instructional approach you're going to see today as opposed to last year. You saw the excitement with the kids and how they're actually using them in their classrooms. So I'd like to introduce Josh Walker, who is one of our kindergarten teachers this year, and Sarah Fiorella, who was kindergarten last year and is currently a first grade teacher, who also is a first grade inclusion teacher, so she really knows how important differentiation is. But I can tell you both these teachers do a dynamic job every day of the personalized learning initiative, small group instruction, and differentiating for all of their students. So they're real excited to share this with us.
Alright, what I need you to do before we start, there's a code on the folder. And it will say, your activity will say, "Class Code," that's your class code. And then it says student name. Wait, put you in as student.
With the space?
So what did you just say? So you have to type in the class code.
With the space in it?
No space.
No space?
No space.
Five and O, okay.
And then we put your names in. You rather listen to your names in? So you type in your names.
Since your names are already in on the roster, the iPad will attempt to fill your name, so make sure it is filling in the correct name. Because if it does do that, you'll be able to just hit go, rather than having to type out your name. So while you guys are logging in, just to kind of give you a little bit of description of what's going to happen, I'm going to introduce the app ClassKit itself, and just tell you a little bit more about it, the process involved with planning and implementing this app through the classroom. So, once everyone has the code, we'll take down the class code, and we'll have a screen with the slides.
Oh, did I do it? I did it backwards.
So you'll be able to see what's going on. And actually, what you will be viewing up on the projected screen is what the teacher will be seeing in real time. Like Lauren said, this is just a free version of the app. There's also a pro and a plus, and the huge benefit behind those is that it allows students to track their progress, and it keeps records of their own grades, so that they can actually see how they're progressing through, depending on what the content area we're covering at, skills. So say if it's ELA, they'll be able to keep track of their progress in ELA, how they're doing in the listening and learning strand or the skills strand, for example. So once you're logged in, you'll just be on the first slide. As soon as you are on the first slide, you can go ahead to the second slide, and as soon as we get everybody in, and we can get the second slide up on the screen, go ahead and move on with that. Does everyone at least have the class code entered?
No, I don't. Totally holding up the works here. Go figure.
Thank you. Oh, perfect.
So the nice thing about the names being filled in is, for me in kindergarten, aside from students that have the same name, it'll automatically fill in for them, so they don't have to spend a whole lot of time having to type out their name, finding the correct letters on the keyboard especially, which I have for the students that have the same name, they have numbers, so switching back and forth between numbers can also be asked of them. But honestly, once they've been doing, we've been doing ClassKit with our ELA, Listening and Learning, for the past two units, so they're at the point now where I typically don't have to help any of them log in because they're used to the process, and like I said, having the names those is makes it a lot easier for them. So, what we have, even though it's not there now, before we went into the slide up there, Sarah, can you go back to that real quick? This is what the teacher will be looking at on their own iPad or computer. Basically, a white screen that is outlined by a black box. That tells me what slide everyone is on currently. So, everyone who's on slide one, and the arrow, you slide over to slide two.
I think thanks for our directions, gentlemen.
There we go.
Will now go to slide two?
So now go to slide two?
Now go to slide two.
So, yeah, slide down this way.
Slide to, I can check.
Sarah, if you display with the thumbnails, and real quick, on the top left. Right on top left, display the thumbnails, left. So now, internet permitted. You can actually see exactly what somebody is doing on that slide. And say they are writing for an answer, typing, whatever they are doing, depending on what the instructions tell them for that slide. You can live, or track that, what they're doing, so I can see far as written a little bit on slide two. And if you look up other points, that is where you can score and grade extremely easily. You can set each slide to a specific amount of points based on what content is on that slide. So, now you can go to slide two. So, basically, the process in setting up ClassKit. The teacher prepares the assignment through the app, or they can also do it through Google Slides or PowerPoint. Basically, it's a little easier to do it through Google Slides and PowerPoint because there's more you can do on those programs, and then transfer it over to ClassKit, because that allows you to set, if you wanted a square box with an empty space on the right. That's something that the app doesn't allow you to do directly. But then you can just transfer it over easily as a PDF file, and it automatically lines up each slide to its own designated slide. It'll create new ones for how many the PowerPoint has. So if it has nine slides, it'll automatically fill in those nine. Once you have set it up, the nice thing about this is if other teachers are using ClassKit, you can share this lesson directly with any other teachers in the school. All you need is their email. You can send an email, basically it says, "I'm sending you this lesson to share with you and use in your classroom." They can accept it, and when they log into ClassKit, that lesson gets put directly into their own file, so that they can use that lesson with their classroom. Yes?
So then that could be used for AIS as well?
Yes, because they can also, depending on how you moved it in, they can also edit parts of it as well. So, once the teacher prepares the lesson, this is, that's pretty much it on your end in terms of instructing them. Basically, what happens is, I'm sorry, in planning the lesson, so now everything's set. All you are doing at this point is you are monitoring students and going to the ones that need help. So, students will log in just like you did, and as they are going, the teacher would be monitoring the class as a whole, like we showed you, looking for students that are maybe stuck on a question, they're not sure exactly what the directions are telling them to do on that specific slide, if they're not on task, and you can see that they're just drawing somewhere. And the nice thing is, can I actually ask, see if one of you guys can find, there is a green hand up on the top right, and it's basically saying to raise your hand, and you can either select "Raise Your Hand" or "Please Check." So, if you'd like, if I'd like everyone to at least go up and press either "Raise Your Hand" or "Please Check."
Is "Please Check" the little E?
Yeah, it's a white hand on the right side.
It's a white hand. Oh, and it says "Please Help or Please Check."
Oh, I forgot to mention.
Please help or please...
If you look up on the screen where the pointer is selected, if that is not selected, you won't be able to select something.
This, the pointer?
You're still trying to transfer between that. That's one of the biggest issues still.
Uh, no, sorry. That little air, no.
And as soon as you, can you back out to the teacher? As soon as anybody raises their hand, the teacher looking at it is going to see, if it's yellow, that means "Please Check." That is the student telling you, "I'm finished, please check my work."
Donald, what are you doing over there?
If a student has a green hand raised, that is telling the teacher, "I'm stuck, please come over and help me out." One thing that is really nice, and that's another thing, the teacher can directly type onto that person's page, so nobody else should be seeing what Sarah's typing on Donald's page.
That's awesome.
So, the nice thing about that is the teacher doesn't have to necessarily go over to that student. They can help them directly on their iPad while remaining with the student they might be working with, or if they're working with a small group, depending on the situation. Another thing that, I haven't used in kindergarten yet, but something I could see being used more often with higher grades is if you look up on the projector, there is a middle option that says "Allow Peer Helpers." That means that if a student is stuck, they can talk to one of their friends next to them, or whoever's in their group, and they can ask them to help them. That means their peer can directly help them on that slide through their own iPad, just like the teacher, just like Sarah did as the teacher. So that allows students to instruct each other at the same time, and that also, like we said, multiplying the teacher, having a student teach another student what they should be doing also reinforces it for the student that is teaching to them. So, we can go on. What we're going to do now is we're going to go to the third slide. Everyone can go to the third slide. This is an example of something that I have done with my kindergartners in our skills strand. Basically, what is going on right here is this is chaining sounds for words that they can decode. They know these sounds. They've been taught in our skills strand already. This is them applying their knowledge to, basically chaining is taking a sound away. So the sound that I have underlined is the sound that they're taking away, and they are replacing it with a new sound to make a new word. What you are looking at right now is not what everybody sees on their own iPad, so you'll notice that you do not have the same picture that is up there on the screen. Because what ClassKit allows us to do is we can differentiate per student on what they see on each slide. So what you guys are seeing up on the main screen is what every student is expected to be able to do. If I have students that are showing that they are still struggling with some of their sound recognition and being able to blend a word, they will have a different screen that it has more structure and support to them, so that they can manage it better on their own independently. So this is my expectation as a class. My higher students, if some of you guys have noticed, there's nothing there in terms of underneath. There is nothing to trace. They're expected to be able to produce the picture for each sound on their own without being able to trace, like you see up on the main screen. So, if you look in the top, those are the directions. Student, basically, students, what I did with my kindergartners, we went through just a trial lesson first, so they can get used to using ClassKit. Once they got used to that, they know that audio file at the top is their directions. They know that they need to listen to that first before they can get started on that slide. But that took me going, taking the time to actually just do a lesson and getting them used to what they should be doing and what should they expect when they're doing work like this. Some of the, if you have one of my lower students, you'll notice that there is an audio file to the left of the word. That audio file to the left of the word is a recording of me giving the sounds and blending the word, so that they can at least hear the correct sounds for each one that's up there. And they know they have to trace the second two because they're not changing. So they're only focused on getting a new sound, coming up with a new sound that they know, and putting it at the beginning of the word. So, and like with for my higher students, you'll notice there's a lot less support there, and that allows, that's because those, I expect to be able to do that without those supports that I have there. So if you want, you can right now take a minute or two to listen to the files. And if you want to even actually complete it, I can go back to the teacher's screen and see what everybody's doing. So Sarah, you want to back off real quick to the, looking at the whole class?
Send your picture. Do your best. Nice picture.
So like I said, it's a live feed, as long as the internet is working well. I can see that immediately as soon as a student completes the work. And if you are finished, you can go to the hand. You can tap "Please Check." Also, do right, make sure you switch to the pencil and not the selector or old left. And then also, you need to be on the selection tool to be able to play audio files.
You really want us to record ourselves?
No, yeah, you don't have to record. So, yeah, so basically, the question is, how do I know just from this slide if the student correctly provided the sounds and wrote the correct picture for each sound? That is where then they are able to record their own voice. On the iPad, they had stopped, it saved the file. They know to move the file to the bottom. And we, I didn't have it up there, but you can basically move it so that they typically output a box so that they can move the audio file to a specific spot, so that I know that that audio file is them reading each sound and then blending it together. One of our strategies for blending sounds together is using our arms. So, for example, the word that's up there is "Huh, ah, t." And then, so that's what they would do to give each individual sound, and then they would blend it together for the word "hot." And so I would expect to be seeing, when they're doing it, I would see them using their arm to sound out and record their own voice as they go. And that is how I know if they are producing the correct sound for what's up there for each one, because they'll typically do, I have them do about 10 to 15 of these in one lesson. Usually, we do this during Daily Five, where they're doing it in a small group. They have designated students that if a student is struggling, they know that there's one student in each group that is able to help them that they should go to before coming to me. Because I'll be monitoring, but I'm working usually with another group myself. So, and that's where the grading can come in. So let's say Cheryl made a word, changed the sound, wrote it correctly, recorded it, has the correct sounds for each one, and blends the word properly as well. Let's say I made that based on this, I usually have it as four points. One for each sound, a fourth point if they can blend the word correctly, because I definitely have some students that still struggle with blending the sounds. They recognize the sounds, but they don't necessarily blend them together to make the word. So typically, that would be, so if everything's done correctly, they would get four out of four points. So, that is my part of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, and I'm also going to apologize for my quick exit. My voice modified basketball team is playing still, so I'm going to go. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to show you what we've been doing in first grade and second grade. I use ClassKit, why would you need more? For math, we've been really trying to personalize student learning. It's a big buzzword in our school this year. I use it. You can go on slide four. I use it in math, so I'll take a simple, our simple math worksheet that we have been doing, and I'll take some problems that we may not have got to in a lesson, and I'll put it all on one ClassKit. And I'll say, "You have to do this before you can do coding." We do codeable, it's a coding. It's a really good incentive. I give the students the directions. I'm actually going to let you do it. I give the students the directions in the first line, and then you can see I differentiate by helping the students and talking them through the problem based on their need. Some students don't need any support, and they can figure out a simple math problem like this by themselves. Other students need the teacher's help to walk them through the problem. And I can't be there for all of my students that need this support because I might be working one-on-one with a child, or working with my higher-level students on a higher math test. So this way, they can go in the hall and I'm still teaching them. I think it's really cool. So if you want to get this a try, I want you to listen. I did my best acting. I closed my door. I did my best acting in twenty-six. I'm British, I'm Irish, Jamaican sometimes, all the same. Sarah, can you see the math?
One for the audience.
Yeah.
Okay, team. Explain how the picture shows subtraction. How to use it. Explain your thinking.
The word inside.
I'm, this is what I did, I found the unit.
I want you to think about, how many cherries are there all?
Okay, ready, now please do that. Okay, team. Explain how the picture shows subtraction. Instead of writing it, use the recording tool and record your thinking. Place your recording in the blue box. So you can see it live, and I can break it up decently. I'm sitting with somebody else. I give her, I can give her a little star, and she can move on. I give her a thumbs up, she moves on her next question next. Nobody's interrupting me, nobody's coming over to attention. They don't do it. It's promoting independence. And now they're there. I think ClassKit, it's both classroom for first graders in the classroom. We're basically teaching the classroom, inside the classroom, for first graders. I think about the first graders as like freshmen in college nowadays. Like they need to be able to independently monitor themselves in their own learning, and be able to do tests like this by themselves, because we are training them for college. We're training them for these jobs that I don't know what they're going to do with their lives. I haven't had a grade yet, and I have to train them to be able to self-learn, self-monitor, self, like, pick out what they need to practice on, so that they can be more independent learners and they can learn something. I mean, make sure, Hannah, if you ever learn something, you can do something on YouTube.
Oh, yes.
Well, this is like YouTube, but education. In second grade, there was a need in the classroom to take their listening and learning strands, I don't want you to listen to this. The teacher, listening and learning strands, and the teacher reads it. This is Rashid, she has her kids at issue. She reads it, and then the kids go into this, and we discuss what they just read. They have to self-moderate themselves, read without listening to the reading. They need to gather points up by themselves, and then they get in a group and discuss. Oh, so you guys do emails. How many times do you have to read emails and then come back and discuss? You're flipping the classroom inside the classroom. I see, it's cool. It gets to the children. I love it. And I just want to ask some questions. We get this a lot. You're just giving them more screen time, and you really don't want to teach. I really want to teach, first of all. And we only talk about screen time, and there's pros and cons, like letting the kids be on screens. But when the kids are in math classroom, or most of the classrooms in the GLP, we talk about consumption versus production. So are they consuming what they're doing in math labs, or are they producing what they're doing in math? When doing ClassKits, they're producing their knowledge. They're showing us their work. They're showing us, they're narrating things by themselves. Instead of just watching it, they're just reading it. So we get that a lot. You're just letting them sit on the screen. You're not actually teaching them. No, I'm teaching them, but I don't have to be there. This also works really well with absenteeism. Kid missed a lesson, I can give the kids a parent link. Or, I mean, they don't have internet access. I can say, "Okay, we got five minutes. Go over your reading and come back to me." Or "Go over your math lesson and come back to me and tell me what you didn't understand." I just multiplied myself, but now I have to shut down my classroom because this kid forgot. I wasn't here that day, and I need to catch him up.
And what we're seeing so far is just part of a free app?
Yeah, so reading app has a lot more things you can do. You can put the whole, like, in first grade, we're working on doing the whole Listening and Learning on ClassKit, so we want to combine them all, so that it's like a library for us. We can do it on like all of the regular on one. We want to create more editing tools that we think would be very, very helpful. It's very, very basic. You can record, I can draw on the screen, I can type ones in. But I'd like to go further with that.
If we, with purchase of the app, does the parent have to purchase the app then too? Or it's free for them to access it? Okay.
It's free for the parents. I mean, and you can use the free app when you're giving it to the parents.
Okay.
It will translate that.
Okay.
So the parents have free...
Students can probably navigate this a lot better than like I could right now.
Actually, Sarah, why don't you say that? That's what we're talking about. It's interesting because I would say that at least half the observations I've done so far this year, the teachers are using this app in their classrooms through their teaching, and it amazes me because, not that I think any of you are struggling up there, but when I hear them saying, you know, "Touch the green hand, touch this, do this, you gotta be on the pencil to do that," the kids, they're digital natives. They just automatically are doing it without a hitch, like even at five years old. They don't have any problem at all. Yeah, it seems like the older we are, it's such a learning curve for us. And they're coming in ready for this, so even if they don't have an iPad at home and haven't been on this, they're picking it up so quickly. And Sarah, and she's really done a great job saying, like, I can tell you, the group instruction and differentiation is really isn't that new in GLP, but I've watched teachers work really, really hard to manage. How do I work with this five group of kids when I've got 15 other kids doing something else? It's truly amazing to me from a principal's perspective to watch. The teacher has five kids, and they're providing direct instruction, but they have this iPad sitting here in the corner. And all of a sudden, they're still working with their group of kids, providing very direct instruction for those children at that level. Then all of a sudden, they'll just do this, and all of a sudden, I'm watching. They're sending out an instructional tip to a child, or they're answering a child's question at the same time, when they're all over the room on their iPad, because it's that very live instruction. So they're truly working, five kids here, but the other 15 are getting their help also. It's really incredible.
This is like, I would say it's like Google Master, like Google Apps. How many use Google Apps in middle school and then high school? Six, seven, eighth grade. But it's for primary level. Like, my kids can't yet use Google Apps yet, but they know this. When they get to sixth, seventh, eighth grade, or third grade, when they go up to this machine, and at this machine, they'll know how to use Google Apps. They won't have to be trained in like three weeks on how to use Google Apps. Because these operating systems are like a different language, but it's all the same language in kind of, like this link is the same no matter where you go, it's a link. Excellent. Excellent.
Well, I just think technology is just going to get more.
There we go. Long out. That was awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah. Exactly.
That's cool.
Is there a speech?
Merry Christmas, Georgia.
So if I came in for a half an hour, you and I could sit down and talk. Okay. Try to do something like that next week. I don't Monday, Tuesday, but something to do Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I'm just going to do mechanical stuff.
Nobody wants to take ownership. Well, you know what it is though. It's like sandwiches being given.
Oh, I don't have my coffee. But I do it all. All right, we'll see what I can do.
Do you do a present? Well, I guess Doug gave a flower this month.
Is it a spost?
Yeah, it was really cool. I really liked that. I have tea, thank you. It was a long day. We did have two snow days, Friday and Monday.
It's Thursday. The I-hand thing.
Um, it was Friday, we had a parent-teacher conferences. Monday was full-day parent-teacher conferences. So, I mean, juniors, you know, high school kids still had to go to school. By the time the high school buses left, most of the neighbors had been plowed out. So they just stayed at school. I'm sure they heard that whole thing in the news about the outgoing supervisor, the highway supervisor in Hamburg. There's all that made it snuggle. Yeah.
Is he outgoing?
Yeah.
You have three breakdowns. First, chances are, the lawsuit. Probably is done during summer.
I found interesting. Yeah, it's too neighboring town.
Yeah, it is.
Who knows? My Christmas shopping done online. But now I have a thing. I'm meeting these parents.
That's a hard fact.
We schedule on that. It is really tough. And it's always hellish, but I wish we would do it. But it's, the Richard Parkhart is coming out sometime.
Yeah.
Do we have an executive session? I want to keep your screen to green like that. Executive session.
To do what?
Hello, everybody. My name is Peter Coleman. I'm the executive director for the Buffalo Niagara manufacturing alliance. Trying to advance the slides. Harold's there. Sorry. So the BNMA is the area's largest organization representing manufacturers in Erie, Niagara County. Just to drag, give you some numbers, there are fifteen hundred manufacturing companies in Western New York. That's the five counties in the Regional Economic Development Council that kind of serves this region. We represent over seventy thousand jobs, supporting nearly twenty-five percent of our region's population. And our number one issue right now is finding good quality people to work in our businesses. Who are the manufacturers that you know? Moog, Cummins, Ford, General Motors, Cracks Air, Drosser, General Mills. These are all the big names that you know out there. But the numbers would show seventy-five percent of all manufacturers are fewer than twenty employees. So, small, medium manufacturers, one you might think of here locally would be like Mustang, Little Machine Shop over there in Eaton. So, when you look at this, you have to understand, there are all the big guys out there, and that everybody knows, but behind them is an army of small manufacturing companies that exist that employ the majority of the people in our industry. Couple of stats. These are hard to see, but some manufacturing stats that you should know. The average manufacturing worker in the United States earned eighty-two thousand dollars annually, including pay and benefits, last year. That far surpasses the rate of pay in Erie County. The average Erie County rate of pay is about, with benefits, a little under fifty thousand dollars. When you look at this as well, the average worker in all non-farm industries earned sixty-four thousand. And then if you look at specifically a manufacturer on average earned more than twenty-six dollars per hour, which equates to a little bit more than fifty-two thousand dollars a year income. So, very attractive, high wages, well, and much higher typically than the area pays in general across all industries. Over the next decade, we're going to lose three and a half million manufacturing jobs primarily due to retirement. So, we call it the grace of now. The baby boomers are retiring, and they're exiting our industry. So, we're a product here of an issue that we saw massive reductions in the manufacturing sector over the last twenty years, and primarily due to offshoring. So, a lot of work went to low-cost countries. That number stopped reducing in two thousand eight, and in the country, we've been increasing our numbers. So now we're having an increase in manufacturing jobs. But coupled with that, the massive retirements that are going to occur. I'm sure you guys are addressing that as well with teachers kind of seeing that come up. So, you know, finding the talent is going to be a major issue for us, and it's something we're trying to address today. Taken alone, manufacturing in the United States would be the ninth-largest economy in the world. So, larger than every other country except for nine, and one of those would be the United States. So the GDP generated by the manufacturers in the United States are the primary economic driver of our country. So we do have a huge problem, and it is a skills gap. And it's costing manufacturers in our communities, and we're trying to address that. So, locally, we have about sixty-seven thousand jobs in manufacturing. Again, paying it on average at that rate here locally, about sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. It is the third-largest sector in our region, the other one being life sciences and government. And the projected job vacancies, we need to fill twenty thousand jobs between now and twenty-twenty-five. So, where do we find that talent? It's going to be from the pipeline of the high schools, tech ed programs, incumbent workers, and long-term unemployed. So we have to get out there, refugees, veterans, immigrants. So, couple of stats here that everybody should know. There are forty million people in the United States with some type of student loan debt. Totally one point three trillion dollars. On average, that equates to thirty-five thousand dollars per person that's carrying debt. Oftentimes, that education they're getting will not pay the debt or have the capability to pay off the debt that they've incurred in getting their education. So, there needs to be some type of rationalization. Rather than just pushing people towards, you know, continuing their education, it's push them towards a career. And find a pathway to personal sustainability where they could be a functioning member of society and live a very good living. So, I'm trying to reiterate that and have the communication with you, kind of a vision of where we're going here locally. And I'm going to show a video of what a region is doing down in Kentucky that we're going to emulate, and then we'll come back to the Northland Workforce Training Center.
We need people to provide skills to do the jobs of the future. And quite frankly, we need them yesterday.
Kentucky Fame is a great partnership.
You know how to do it today.
Kentucky, it brings together manufacturers, the education community, and students to be able to promote manufacturing and the jobs and careers that are there for manufacturing. What makes Kentucky Fame a wonderful partnership is it's led by the manufacturer. If it does what we believe it'll do, it'll do two things. One, it will sustain our present manufacturing base where they're no longer having to compete with each other. But also, it'll help bring new industry in because they'll look at Kentucky and say, "Hey, they got it together, they're investing, they're training, they're doing things that manufacturing needs and workforce." We are promoting ourselves as a major place for manufacturing. And to be able to do that, you have to have a trained workforce. Kentucky Fame shows manufacturers that maybe want to relocate here, or manufacturers who want to expand here, that we can provide that trained workforce for them and have them working from day one. The benefit for students is that they can go to class two days a week, and then go to work three days a week, and they're getting paid to apply what they're learning. Kentucky Fame has given me the opportunity to go to school, get an education, have a career.
Coming out of high school and starting the AMT program, I never realized two years later, I would have a full-time job at Toyota, making good wages, and have a career ahead of me that's so bright.
This career path I've taken through Kentucky Fame has enabled me to have the confidence that I need to be able to have a job after I get out of college. Right now, I'm on the track of being debt-free coming out of college, which not many college students get to say.
That's one of the good things too about the degree we have. It's multi-skilled. It's electrical, PLCs, robotics, mechanics, plumbing, flow power.
The biggest opportunity is to build a consistent framework and structure across the state of Kentucky, and it gets more industry involved and more educational locations involved. End result is we produce so many high skilled workers across the state.
As a small business owner, it provides a solution for me to hire cost-efficient employees that are being trained the way I need them to be trained.
And that's what you see on this campus. It's to build that toolbox, full skill set, it's going to be the need of a world-based group of manufacturers.
Manufacturing has changed. How we manufacture, how we do it, it's not longer dark, dangerous, and dirty. And so it takes certain technical skills, but it also takes a lot of soft skills, ability to communicate, to work in teams. It is a career then. You know, it's not just a job.
Most of the guys that are the great men, these guys in my honor, are the guys who came through this program. It's given me a great opportunity to start a career.
The graduates from Kentucky Fame program are excited about their future. They know that they're going to have a strong future where they're making great income, being able to support their family, and to advance Kentucky.
In partnership, there is power. This is power.
What's so great about Kentucky Fame and its future are the partnerships that are involved with the leadership of Kentucky Association of Manufacturers, the state legislature, manufacturers across the state, and ACTCS. This will be success.
So, the BNMA has been working with the state, and we will be opening the first industry-led school in New York in the fall of two thousand eighteen. The school is led by industry, the board of directors, it's funded through a partnership of the Buffalo Billion, through Buffalo Funds, through the city of Buffalo, from the New York State Power Authority and New York State. It's a forty-five million dollar investment. And that will go into the building itself, to a surrounding manufacturing campus, that we will be then bringing in an innovation center and become a center of excellence for manufacturing here in Western New York. We have a hundred and fifty companies onboard right now to start employing the students on day one. So the student will go to school for two days, and then go to work for three, and be earning a wage of approximately fifteen dollars an hour. So, kind of unheard of, but if you can't function in that environment, if you're not prepared to put in forty hours a week, you don't take this schoolwork home with you every day. There's not a three hours of homework. You're going to do, everything is applied at the center. So you do all your work, you function, you do a forty-hour week, you're drug tested on day one. That's a huge issue for us. Students need to understand that marijuana is a drug. And if you smoke marijuana, you cannot get a job working in any of these companies. So drug testing is an issue. But this industry-led initiative, I think, will really bring some very unique opportunities to our community. So, why are we doing this? Unemployment rate is at record lows. We are basically at full employment in New York State, somewhere in the realm of four percent. When you get into the city, it's probably closer to six and a half percent. And then the other part of this is going to find people who have just left the workforce altogether. So, incumbent workers or workers that have just disengaged because their benefits have run out, and they've left the workforce altogether. So we are struggling to fill these jobs, and that's why we got involved with the state to help develop this solution. So, the Northland Workforce Training Center will focus on advanced manufacturing. What is advanced manufacturing? So, what happened is those jobs that left this country or were automated were low-value jobs. They were, I put a nut on a bolt and I turn it in. So that's gone overseas. Today, the work that's performed is a high end. You're working with very sophisticated machines. You saw those kids there. You see the hydraulics, pneumatics, electrical, actuums that need to be known. And then you're working with machines that are worth millions of dollars. So that's how you're integrating today. They're not really lifting fifty pounds all the time. It's really operating an assembly line type of work, and working in a pod where you're operating multiple pieces of machinery. In addition, we're going to be also working with NIPA, the same issue we're having in manufacturing they're having in the utility industry. They're going to lose about ten thousand of their jobs here over the next. They have ten thousand people that are eligible for retirement right now. And they're sticking out, they're trying to pad up their 401Ks and retirements before they exit. But it's a massive fear factor for them. But it's a massive fear factor for them. So, the vision is for the Northland Workforce Training Center to be a premier model of public-private partnership, providing education, training, workforce development services that's industry-driven and employee-focused. And the mission is to advance economic well-being of the Western New York region by developing and maintaining a skilled and diverse workforce to meet the needs of the advanced manufacturing industry sectors. When you go into our shops, there's too many white males. Predominantly gray hair evolved because they're aging out. We don't have enough women engaged. We don't have enough minorities engaged. So, that will be a major mission of this initiative. We need girls instead of education. We need to promote it, we need to advance it. Got the tech teachers, I don't know how many girls are in your classes today. What would be the percentage?
15 to 20.
15 to 20? That should be 50%. So, this gender identity roles that we are running, the culture that exists, is really going to affect, really, our nation and our community. So, we really need to promote these opportunities to everyone, and we need to educate these students on the opportunities that exist in our companies. The partnership that we talked about, so we have Empire State Development is a funder, Budsea, which is the Buffalo Urban Development Center, New York State Power Authority, and the SUNY Regional Foundation. Our training partners, we are bringing Alfred State up to run programs at our city campus. Why do we like the Alfred State model? They deliver something that's called an AOS degree. It's an Associates of Occupational Science. Your math and English are applied in these programs. So, you're not going to learn Shakespeare. You're going to learn how to read a word instruction. You're going to learn how to read a blueprint. You're going to learn how to communicate well with others. You're going to learn how to critically think. Your mathematics will be embedded as well. How do you measure properly? How do you work a micrometer? How do you take a reading on a component? And they spend an hour a day in their classroom, and they'll spend four and a half to five hours a day on the lab floor. Then, they'll deploy on their own student projects, and on the days they're not going to school, they'll be out in the workforce with a real company, earning real wages. Our partners that are going to operate the center are the Buffalo Niagara Manufacturing Alliance, the Buffalo Urban League, Catholic Charities, and Goodwill of Western New York. So, we have three workforce development agencies, social service agencies that are going to work along with. Why? There will be intensive career counseling throughout the process. We have to track every student for three years after graduation. They have to give us permission to track them. We'll track them through their W2s, and we want them to engage with us as well when they graduate. So, you can find out, are they working for a manufacturing company? And if I can track a W2 or W4, I know they're working for a company that has a mix code that starts with a 3, they're working for a manufacturer. I'll know what their earnings are. And we'll be able to provide that data back. So, this will be a data-driven initiative. But the intensive soft skills, I don't know if you've heard that or if everybody's familiar with that. We find oftentimes that the professional or soft skills are non-existent today with a lot of the young people coming into the workforce. You have to be ready to work shift work. The day manufacturing starts typically between 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning. Or you're going to work second shift, where you're working from 7:00 to 10:00 at night. Or you may work third shift. So, when we go through our assessments, we're going to make sure that these individuals are prepared for that. And if they're not, it's just not the program for them. So, we will be targeting, we'll be coming out, we'll be recruiting, we'll be performing outreach. We're going to open up, those 150 companies are going to open up the doors, not only to the students, but to faculty, administrators, and to the counselors to identify the opportunities that they can communicate, the opportunities that we can offer to the students. So, aggressive recruiting and assessment. We're going to assess everybody. We need to make sure that they can read right typically at a 10th grade level. Because you have to be at that level in order to function with the equipment that exists in our sector today. For credit stackable training. So, when I say stackable, there will be embedded credentials throughout the process. So, if a student decides to leave, they're not leaving with nothing. They're not a dropout. They're going to have a credential. They'll have a document that they can take with them and say, here's my NCRS, my National Career Ready to Certificate. Here is my OSHA $10 card that I'm authorized and have been shown that I've been trained in proper safety practices. We'll build in CPT credentials, and then that will advance as they go through their education. So, the SUNY provider will provide those first two years of education. Afterwards, we'll have corporate training opportunities for incumbent workers at the companies that we're dealing with to do advanced training. And they'll be more specialized. This is the building we're renovating. I know it's difficult to see, but this is the old Niagara Clearing factory on Northland Avenue. We gutted the facility completely, it's been abated. We're putting on the new roof structure. We got our first windows going in on the building. It will be airtight here, hopefully, within the next month. We'll start pouring the concrete floors in the manufacturing facility. And it's going to be an open environment. So, you can see here is the office. This is the more manufacturing campus that exists. So, we have 250,000 square feet in the building here at 683. We have another 40,000 of capacity on the right. And in the whole campus, we have close to a million square feet of capacity. People start to do outreach to local manufacturers to come and join us on this medical, on the manufacturing campus. So, we want to emulate what's going on with the medical campus down in the city. If you know what that used to look like 15 years ago, it's been a major transformation for that community. Then you go over to what's happened on Canal Side, and how the waterfront's come around. This will be the anchor tenant to revitalize the east side of Buffalo. And we're in the most impoverished area of our community. So, we'll be changing lives. It's a food desert. People don't realize there's only two restaurants within a mile of this facility. You know what they are? Kentucky Fried Chicken and McDonald's. They don't have access to fresh produce. So, this gets to that building process. If you don't have the right food to put in your body, how do you function? They have to go to a corner market to burn terrible food on a daily basis. So, this place will have our own restaurant, and eating facilities will be opened in the public. On weekends, we're going to have farmer's markets. Really, you know, building as an impetus what we can do for the east side. Kind of the inside of what the facility is going to look like. We'll have about 140,000 square feet of learning space, broken up into labs. And we're going to be teaching our welding, welding technologies, machine tool technologies, electrical programs, industrial electricians, electromechanical. So, that's the convergence of electricity and a mechanical device, robotics, assembly lines, that type of work. We'll also have the industrial or the utility electrician, more of a high voltage, the guys who are out working the power lines. Average wage in that sector is $72,000 a year. And you can get there pretty quickly. In all these sectors, you can go from your first two years of education, you should graduate with a two-year degree and be earning at least $40,000 a year with little or no debt. There should be no debt coming out of this program. Within additional three years of work, you should be north of $55,000 to $60,000 a year earnings. That doesn't include benefits. Another feature of this is, in our sector, we have the lowest pay differential and pay gap by gender and race. The only one that's better than us is education. So, you're protected by a contract, the teachers are, and they're paid accordingly. Same thing happens in our sector. You're paid for your knowledge and your output and your capabilities. You know, I think it's a very powerful message to show that, you know, we get it, and we're paying the highest wages here locally with no subsidy typically from the state, local, or federal government. Some more renderings of what the facility is going to look like, and my contact information if anybody would like to touch base. Any questions?
Could you just talk about the Dream and Do It? Did I miss it?
Dream and Do It is a, we are engaged with Dream and Do It. I'm the coordinator for Erie Niagara County. Oftentimes, the tech team goes out to ECC, they do tech wars, they'll do engineering days. We'll be scheduling those visits between the manufacturers and the students. So, the students typically after engineering days, they go look at the college facilities. They'll then disembark and go out and meet with the local manufacturer and kind of see what's going on behind the door. It's really our way of doing outreach. So, our industry has to become very proactive, and industry partners will need to be in here talking to the students, talking to the teachers, talking to parents to address this skills gap. If we don't, we're done for. And if our manufacturing sector fails in Western New York, Western New York isn't done. We fund, manufacturers fund over 60% of all state projects here. And from a funding standpoint, when you look at it from a tax base. So, without a strong manufacturing sector, this region is really going to be impacted negatively. Well, I think the role of schools is always to educate their students so they're prepared for a career and prepared to succeed when they get out of here. I mean, it's not just book learning, it's the soft skills aspect. Are you going to be a good citizen? Are you going to function properly? And I'm an Eden resident. My kids have grown up here, I love Eden. I mean, it's a very comforting area. Eden is not an issue for us. The places we love to hire, think about it, Norah Pollins, Eden, Akron, Alden. All farming communities oftentimes where a number of the students have a mechanical aptitude because they worked on a farm. They've had to function in their life. And they have great work ethic typically. So, you know, do what you do. But all we want is to promote the opportunities that exist. The charter school for applied technologies is the City of Buffalo. Before they say the Pledge of Allegiance, the first thing they do is every day is Career Day. That's a K through 12 program. So, the first announcement they make every day is every day is Career Day. And if you have that mentality here, and as you're educating children and trying to promote them, then I define, there's a reason why you're here. And these kids have the build, what we call the building the brand of you. Who are you going to be? You're a commodity, you are an asset. And you need to show that and be proud of yourself and deliver yourself in a manner that is encouraging to others that wants to pay you money for your brain, your heart, and your hands. So, you know, that's what I'd say if we're looking for.
Peter, thanks for coming. I lived this day in and day out. I was at a Toyota facility Monday, and there is a gender gap. Basically, I was at the Raymond Fork Truck Facility down in Binghamton, New York, and there was female welders. And it's, you don't see a lot of it, but they're making a great wage. You know, they're in at 6:00 in the morning, they're out at 2:00 in the afternoon. But this is real. What Peter's presenting is real. And the reason why I invited Peter here was, I happened to be at Colgate University here a couple of weekends ago. 58 grand tuition. And basically, what do you come out with? A liberal arts degree. How are you going to pay off just 58 grand a year with a liberal arts degree? And it's, you know, there's a real career here. This isn't a job, this is a career. And what Peter's saying in regards to what's happening in the workforce is so true. And we're in trouble if this gap doesn't get filled. So, you know, I think all our students need to be exposed to this career that's out there. And it's not like the old day of you were working in Bethlehem Steel, you know, maybe that we thought of our parents worked in and stuff like that. You're working in some real nice facilities now. I mean, complete air conditioning, pretty clean places. So, it's a career that, you know, people need to be exposed to.
Creators are wanting, I think statistically, you should know the numbers. Only one-third of the jobs in the United States require a four-year degree. So, if you have more than one-third of your student population going for a four-year degree, you're overtraining them. I'm not saying education isn't important, but there's a pathway to a career that they become underemployed.
Doesn't require.
So, people need to, if you're not looking at the New York, or you're not looking at the US Department of Labor Statistics and developing a business plan as a board of education, you're doing a disservice to your customers, who are the students and the taxpayers. So, that should be really addressed, I mean, heavily addressed. Understand what those numbers are. Those numbers might be a little bit higher here from a town like Eden, but, you know, what is your pathway? And what are the opportunities that exist? How do you assess the students? How do you help direct them? And how do you educate the parents on the opportunities that exist for their students, their kids as well?
My nephew graduated from Eden. My nephew and nieces graduated from here. And my nephew went to a private college, an Allegheny College in Pennsylvania. And he graduated a semester early. And he just recently said, I shared this with the board, he says, "I just cost my parents a ton of money, and I don't have a job. I don't know what I'm doing." He decided to totally switch directions. I mean, the business background will help him, but he has now started a company flipping houses. He loves working with his hands, and he said, "I wish I would have went to a trade school." He says, "I can't believe that cost my parents this much money." So, it was interesting coming from someone who, as my nephew, never thought would have wanted to do what he is doing, but he loves it. He's almost done flipping his first house out in Brant, and he's just loving life. Where three months ago, he thought he was in the toilet because it's like, what am I going to do with myself?
We're not trying to promote trade schools over traditional education. You have an incredible tech ed department here. In Canada, though, there's a tech ed department in every school. You have the Winnetia Association that they're members of, I think voluntarily, and they get together. But there are BOSI's opportunities as well. I know it's difficult for a community that's losing population to address this, and it could affect your teachers, your funding. But again, I think if you have a plan in place and you can develop and implement a student plan that takes into account where the opportunities are today, that's the best service to your students.
One of the things that's always impressed me about Eden is we have such a diverse group of residents. We have many seniors who are going on to medical school, and many seniors who could tear down a motorcycle engine since they were in eighth grade and rebuild it. And we should always celebrate that diversity. Everyone should strive to use their skills to forward themselves as opposed to go to college because someone told them to go to college. There's other paths, and this is an excellent eye-opener to say, there's other paths to solid employment, consistent employment with really good wages.
The only other factor, and I've been around this now for five, six years, is if there is a BOSI's engagement, make the opportunity open to all your students. Don't be selective. Don't send the bottom third. We're paid wages that are higher than any other industry. We want the top third. So, I think a lot of people oftentimes have a negative impression of what BOSI's programs are. We've all heard the nicknames. We all have heard the horror stories. That mentality has to change, and I hope I was able to give you a little bit of direction. I'd be pleased to come back and then bring anybody that wants to go on a tour of a local manufacturing company to have that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just go like this.
Thank you.
That was awesome. That was really interesting. Just wait till Sandy sits down, and then I'll... Okay, are we all set? All right, we'll begin. What's wrong? All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. Anyone? Okay. Yeah, come on up.
Okay.
Could you just use the mic, though? That'd be awesome. Thanks.
Sorry.
I know, I know. I'm sorry. It's just really hard to hear and hear.
Don't be nervous.
And what is your name?
My name is Nancy Augers.
Thank you, Nancy.
Great here. Um, that's great.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so, we could have bought a house anywhere. We chose Eden because it's a tiny community. You guys are ranked in the top 15. It was a great fit for us. But since my kids have started here, you've been laying off teachers, dropping courses, don't play with hall monitors, the library is closed a lot, the library is not accessible after hours, and your ranking has dropped. These things you know. My taxes, however, go up every year, as you also know. I have not complained until now. I know that you guys have been trying to get rid of Pam and Jenna for years and for reasons I just can't even imagine. But if you let her walk out of this building on June 30th, you're going to make a mistake of such gigantic proportions, it will take years to rectify. She is the heart and soul of this school. I don't work for the school, but I work in the building. I am here every single day. I am positioned right outside her office, and I have to tell you, she is the one who keeps this place in order. She is the visible face in the hallway. She knows every single student's name and their backstory. She is tough but fair. She is well-respected by her students, and she goes above and beyond. She works late at night and weekends. She is not a member of our community, but she is a vital part of our community. She has an outstanding relationship with the local law enforcement and CPS agents. She is an asset. If you were to bring someone new into here, the demeanor of these hallways would change. It terrifies me. My children, all the other students in this building, in this district, they are priceless. And I am saddened by the fact that you are willing to put a financial price tag on their education, their safety, and their future. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to new business. Item A, resignations. Number one, accept the resignation, the recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the recognition, the resignation of teacher aide Kelly Beller be accepted effective November 30th, 2017. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Ms. Beller for her service to the district.
Second. Discussion?
Justice Kelly accepted a teaching position at East Aurora. We're excited for her.
Terrific.
Yep, good for her. Congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Item two, accept resignation, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus driver Ruth Perrogue be accepted effective January 3rd, 2018. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Perrogue for her 16 years of service to the district.
Second. Discussion?
She's done a good job. She's had some tough runs, too. Yep.
Bus drivers always do a good job for us.
They do. This is very true.
Wonderful job getting everybody on the other side.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Seeing no discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
All right. Item B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective, and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Here are the recommended motions. Item one, appoint Assistant District Treasurer, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Natalia Andrews be appointed on probation as Assistant District Treasurer effective approximately January 2nd, 2018 through July 1st, 2018. Salary is $40,400.
Second. Discussion?
Justice Natalia is here. We're absolutely thrilled that she wants to come to Eden. Her son was with her a little earlier, but I'm pretty sure he went home. So, will you just raise your hands so the board knows where you're sitting? Okay. Congratulations.
Seeing no more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Congratulations. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Okay? Congratulations. We'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you. Item two, extend appointment, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the appointment of substitute guidance counselor Jennifer Dibble be extended through January 3rd, 2018. Salary is $95 per day effective October 16, 2017 through January 3rd, 2018.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Item three, appoint extended leave substitute teacher, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Andrea Demont, who is initially certified in Students with Disabilities 1 through 6 and Childhood Education 1 through 6, be appointed as an extended leave substitute teacher replacing Mrs. Lamarka approximately March 1st, 2018 through approximately May 1st, 2018.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Item four, appoint full-time teacher aide, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Michelle Smith be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective December 1st, 2017 through May 31st, 2018. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second. Discussion?
So, Michelle would be replacing Kelly Beller.
And Michelle is here, too.
Oh, thank you for telling me. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Welcome, Michelle.
Welcome.
Item C, increase hours, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hours for technology teacher Brian Smith be increased from .33 FTE to .5 FTE effective January 29th, 2018 due to the addition of a technology elective to be taught by Mr. Stephen Jones.
Second. Questions?
It was a great night to do it after Peter Coleman coming. So, what I wanted to let you know is that this is money from Senator Galavan's grant for ag in the classroom, and so Mr. Jones will be teaching agricultural production systems, and Mr. Smith will be taking over Mr. Jones's DDP fourth-period class effective second semester.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Item D, approve accessing of textbooks, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, out-of-date textbooks from Eden Elementary be declared access and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Item E, approve change in school building configurations, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, effective July 1st, 2018, Eden Elementary School be reconfigured from grades 3 through 6 to grades 3 through 5, and Eden Junior/Senior High School, grades 7 through 12, be reconfigured to a middle school, high school, grades 6 through 12.
Second. Discussion?
So, this is what the board has been working on since your original resolution to move forward with the capital project and the middle school. I'm really happy to say that the high school had a wonderfully attended and very successful parent information night, and they have another one coming up. Is it January? No, Jeff, is it January? Thank you, Lucinda. And so, having this resolution adopted by the board will allow me to complete the paperwork for the State Education Department, which is due before March 1st, and then we wait for them to approve. Okay. Do we know how long it takes them to approve? I'm hoping they get it done before June because we're ready to roll.
Maybe they better.
But they don't let you do it too early, so it's really kind of... Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you. Item F, approve minimum wage increase, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the New York State minimum wage increase from $9.70 per hour to $10.40 per hour. The uncertified substitute rate will increase from $70 per day to $75 per day.
Second. Discussion?
Do we want to say anything about it?
All in favor?
Wait, I...
Lauren, just for a moment.
I just wanted to let you know that that minimum wage increase doesn't come in January 1st. It comes on December 31st.
Oh, okay.
So...
Can we add that to the resolution, Barb?
I don't think it will matter for our teaching staff as we're off our winter recess at that point.
Right.
But anyone at support staff level that would be working would be increased as well due to the law.
So, December 31st? Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Okay. Item six, information and proposals, the business report.
Just in case you didn't get enough presentations from me earlier, this evening in your board packet, you all received the proposed Eden Central Reserve Plan that will be on the docket for the January board meeting for adoption. But again, I wanted to go through one more time for you and for the public what a reserve plan is and where we're going with it. Actually, a reserve plan is a blueprint to how to save any access you might have in your budgeting process because if we budgeted strictly for the exact amount of dollars that the district were going to spend and left nothing in hopes of a small surplus, the district would never be able to absorb the many mandates that come from the state that we don't know about at budget time. Not to mention the fact that we are starting to budget now for something that won't start until July 1st of next year, so there's an opportunity for many changes to occur. So, districts are working on, Eden is working on, long-term financial planning. They're looking at, we've looked at the current reserves. We're looking at what reserves we need to facilitate our long-range plans, and a process of developing the reserve plan has been going on with this Board of Education since the summer. So, the investment plan or strategy to take and minimize the economic impact on our taxpayers and on our students as we go through the budgetary process. We talked in the budget workshop tonight about the concerns with the state budget and the funding from New York State for our school districts. Without the use of reserves, districts would not be able to maintain the high quality of education they've been able to hang on to, and there would be much more cuts than we have seen in the past years as our state aid is not being fully funded according to the foundation aid formulas. Those were frozen in '08, '09. We did get some relief last year for them. We had a gap elimination adjustment for five years. These things would have negatively impacted the education even more than they have had not this district been prudent in their long-term financial planning. Now, we're looking to create a actual reserve plan that will be adopted by this Board of Education, reviewed annually, and readopted each year.
So, if I could just break in for one moment. For those of you who have been at other community forums, what would come out clear in those is that as a district, we receive approximately $1.2 million less each year since 2008. Clearly, that is some of the reductions that you've seen in staffing and in programs. Also, what we can go back and we can look at research to show that when the state of New York did contribute 50% in terms of aid for our district, I won't speak for other districts, is that it dovetailed into a lower tax contribution by our residents and also was just the perfect alignment for programs for Eden. And so, our goal is to try to get back where we were prior to 2008, but it's going to take the state of New York to get us there.
Correct. And in the interim, we're trying to protect our district and our students against these economic roller coaster that we're seeing. So, we're looking for fiscal stability. We're looking to offset the local share of major purchases, things like the capital project, buses, technology, and we're looking to improve our bond rating because, again, we don't want to pay higher interest rates. And when we look at ourselves as a business, a $29 million business, which is how we're looked at when we go out for bonds, this is the lens that they want to see. How are we planning for the future? What are we saving? Typically, if we were a business, this would be the owner's equity section, but this is our reserve section and our fund balance for a school district. So, the purpose of our existing reserves, we currently have one for capital project for the building, and then for equipment and buses, that it helps keep our equipment up to date for our buildings and maintenance area, and our buses so our students remain safe on the roads. We have an employee benefit accrued liability which helps pay for sick time, vacation time that may have been accrued, things like that. We have a retirement contribution reserve which helps us to save money to offset the costs for the employees' retirement system. That's our support staff. We're not allowed to save it this time. There is no vehicle for teachers.
So, that was Don's question earlier.
Yes, that's your support staff people. We have to save for unplanned expenditures. We have to save for unemployment insurance. What most people don't understand is if, when you work in the industry world, every employer pays a percentage of their wages into an insurance fund to offset the costs in New York State and federally for unemployment insurance. In a school district, we're exempt from that, and we pay our actual unemployment claims 100%. We have a reserve that is set up to set aside money for those costs. We have a repair reserve. That's for, we use it typically here in Eden to, we have a cogent facility that produces electricity. When that goes down, instead of the bump in the budget, we have this repair reserve that we can utilize to fix it. If a roof were to blow off or something else, we could go to that repair reserve fund. We could look at it two ways. We could look at it as, we're going to borrow the money and put it back within two years, or we could hold a public forum and the board could vote to permanently remove those funds so we don't have to worry about repaying them and then replenish them in a year when we've done a little better on our budget. So, these are the current reserves, and I've kind of talked to you already about what they're for and how they're used. And these reserves, unemployment, retirement, and the employee benefit accrued liability, those are with board authorization to utilize them. So, the ones that we have to have the community's input on are our repair reserve, which we're required to hold a budget hearing for, and then our capital reserve and our vehicle reserve, which are propositions on our annual vote or separate vote for a capital project. So, we're going to determine, we've determined the board risk. We've proposed, we're going to propose some new reserves, which there's going to be one on there for proposition with the adoption of the reserve. And then, we're going to develop, we've developed our reserve plan. We've reviewed it. And what's going to happen at the January meeting, hopefully, this Board of Education will adopt the reserve plan that we've all worked so hard to create. Does the board have any questions? Thank you.
Anything on road? You don't have to.
I was just going to reiterate for those who had come. So, I also wanted to just reiterate, we've presented a rollover budget. We've given a budget calendar to the Board of Education as part of that work. And one thing that I didn't mention in the budget workshop was that New York State is currently projecting a $4.6 million budget gap for 2018. So, there's concern with what funding they will have. The Board of Regents this year asked for $1.6 billion in new educational funding. which helps us to save money to offset the costs for the employees' retirement system. That's our support staff. We're not allowed to save at this time. There is no vehicle for teachers.
So, that was Don's question earlier.
Yes, that's your support staff people. We have, we have to save for unplanned expenditures. We have to save for unemployment insurance. What most people don't understand is if, when you work in the industry world, every employer pays a percentage of their wages into an insurance fund to offset the costs in New York State and federally for unemployment insurance. In a school district, we're exempt from that, and we pay our actual unemployment claims 100%. We have a reserve that is set up to set aside money for those costs. We have a repair reserve. That's for, we use it typically here in Eden to, we have a co-gen facility that produces electricity. When that goes down, instead of the bump in the budget, we have this repair reserve that we can utilize to fix it. If a roof were to blow off or something else, we could go to that repair reserve fund. We could look at it two ways. We could look at it as, we're gonna borrow the money and put it back within two years, or we could hold a public forum and the board could vote to permanently remove those funds so we don't have to worry about repaying them and then replenish them in a year when we've done a little better on our budget. So, these are the current reserves, and I've kind of talked to you already about what they're for and how they're used. And these reserves, unemployment, retirement, and the employee benefit accrued liability, those are with board authorization to utilize them. So, the ones that we have to have the community's input on are our repair reserve, which we're required to hold a budget, a hearing for. And then our capital reserve and our vehicle reserve, which are propositions on our annual vote or separate vote for a capital project. So, we're gonna determine, we've determined the board risk. We've proposed, we're gonna propose some new reserves, which there's going to be one on there for proposition with the adoption of the reserve. And then we're gonna develop, we've developed our reserve plan. We've reviewed it. And what's gonna happen at the January meeting, hopefully this Board of Education will adopt the reserve plan that we've all worked so hard to create. Does the board have any questions? Thank you.
Anything on road, or you... You don't have to.
I was just going to reiterate for those who had come. So, I also wanted to just reiterate, we've presented our rollover budget. We've given a budget calendar to the Board of Education as part of that work. And one thing that I didn't mention in the budget workshop was that New York State is currently projecting a $4.6 million budget gap for 2018. So, there's concern with what funding they will have. The Board of Regents this year asked for $1.6 billion in new educational funding. That's down from the $2.1 billion they requested last year. So, already, they're telling the governor and the legislature that we don't need as much funding. So, it's important that any advocacy that can occur, occurs quickly so that...
Like right now.
Yes, so that they're getting that in their budget process.
You wanna jump in there, Chen? About what anybody in the audience can do right now?
I mean, I've said it once. You just have to write, I think, the numbers and the contact. Everything's on our website. Information is still on our website. You have to have your voice be heard. It can't just come from Boards of Education and superintendents. It has to come from the general public. I said earlier, the Music and Arts Boosters put out a really nice simplified letter. I think that's on our website, too.
Yes, it is.
And you can just download it, print it, sign your name, and mail it to any one of the contacts that are on there. Or all of them, over and over again. Fax it, email it. I mean, they are listening, and I don't think that they don't want to support us. I just think they need to know that there's enough public support that they can push harder than they already are.
Yep. Thank you, Chen.
And that's the end of my report.
So, in terms of my report, I just want to state that Senator Galavan was here today. He's a huge supporter for Eden. We're thrilled. Whenever he comes by, he met with the boys volleyball team and gave them a proclamation, which is a wonderful honor. He invited them onto the floor of the Senate in Albany. It would be nice to be able to get them there. If our school was closer to Albany, that's where he would present it. I told him, if he paid for the bus, we'd absolutely go. And we probably take a few more kids with us when we did go. He had a great conversation with the kids, and then afterwards, he had a wonderful conversation with us about careers upcoming. Again, the shortage in careers that we're talking about. Paul and I were just talking about that same shortage that we heard from Peter Coleman coming up in education. The supply and demand in the next couple of years is gonna be pretty scary. But he was talking about what he's seeing happening in Wyoming County and some of the dairy farms, where honestly, there's one person in an office watching a computer as all this automation takes care of the cows. So, the cows have a chip in their ear, and they go to feed, and that chip reads that the cow is there and opens up the gate without anybody being there. Then the cow walks forward to the next feeding station, and that, now they're standing on a scale. And this particular chip recognizes which cow it is, how tall they are, how wide they are. One arm of the computer comes out and disinfects them, and the other one zaps them with their milking apparatus, and the farmer has sat near his computer the whole time. He said, "It's just fascinating to watch." So, you know, we're getting, it's exciting to start to talk about all of this and realize that there's a direction that things are going for, for our students. And then in addition to that, I just really wanted to put a huge, huge thank you out for the last week. First of all, to our Transportation Department. And Mary's here, and she's generally up at 4:00. So, this is a really big deal, Mary. You should be in bed by now. As our head bus driver for transportation, she and I talk at 4:00 in the morning on weather days that are suspect. And also to our Building and Grounds crew, it's amazing, if you ever have the opportunity to get out here before school, to see this functioning of loaders and trucks and school buses and just what it takes to get the buses out on time. And then yesterday, we had, was it yesterday that we had the early release? Just to see what it takes to get all of our kids back into district that we have in so many different places in order to get our elementary school children out on time. It takes our high school kids leaving early. And so, my thank you is not just to the transportation staff in the Building and Grounds, but also to the students, the teachers, and the staff. Students, because they Twitter me like at midnight and give me all kinds of encouragement as to why the weather's gonna be terribly bad the next morning. And to the teachers who, the other day, when the roads were just horrible, were all here, even though I was so worried that when Hamburg went down late and Lake Shore and Frontier went down late, along with, I think, Orchard Park and East Aurora, I didn't think we were gonna have the staff, and we had everybody. It was just incredible to watch. So, it takes a huge effort to have this happen. We were not in danger with our kids. We brought them in. If in fact we had been, we would certainly have called a snow day. But in the end of the day, what we need to remember is that this is winter. And if we can get them in, even if we can get them in late, or even if we can get them in and we have to bring them home early, that we'd rather have our kids at school. Some of them don't have food at home. Some of them would be alone at home, and many of them would be outside during the day anyways. And so, our first goal is safety. Our second one is to get them into school. Although there are four snow days, and I'm sure we're gonna use every single one of them if the lake doesn't freeze. And I think it's 42 degrees right now, so...
I just want to thank you for the text message at 4:00 AM. We were thinking about it. Thank you. Because I got my call at 6:00 AM that my school was closed.
Yes. I just don't understand.
Thanks for the text at 4:00 AM.
So, Mary said, "We have kids on bus, we have drivers out at 6:00 o'clock already." So, for us to close at 6:00 is too late. It's just simply too late. And so, to base our closing on all those districts that are closing at 6:00 is impossible. We have to, we have to know early.
I just learned how to do the "do not disturb" on the group chat.
Yeah, you want to definitely do that, because I'm gonna let you know very, very early. And I invite the kids to get up at 4:00, too, don't I, Haley? I'm like, "Let's check back at 4:00."
He showed me the charts. I was telling everyone.
That's right.
I was like, "I promise, we won't be here all day."
Yes. If they follow me on Twitter, they'll know ahead of time. That's right.
Someone else is up at 4:00 texting you, too.
That's right. Yep. And Paul's like, "Tell me more, tell me more." So...
I'm always texting her at that time.
Yeah, it works. So, I love the kids.